Good morning. Appreciate everybody being here this morning. It's Tuesday, the 11th day of February 2020. I'd like to call the Weber County Commission meeting for that date to order. Appreciate everybody being here. We're going to start off this morning with an invocation from Shawn Wilkinson, a pledge of allegiance by Bill Ross. Welcome, gentlemen. And then we'll have the thought of the day by Commissioner Harvey. Shawn.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for so many blessings that we enjoy here in this community. We're grateful for the beautiful surroundings that we have, for the mountains and for all of the good things in our lives. At this time, we ask that in our local and national politics that we may have civility and kindness, that we can all do our part to make sure that good feelings prevail and that we are open to each other and, again, that we may be kind in the things we say and in the way that we act. And, again, we thank thee for all of the blessings that we enjoy, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Chair Frohr. The balance between confidence and humility is best learned through extensive experience I've learned that, you know, I used to say when I was doing a lot of skiing that if I wasn't pushing myself hard enough to fall down, I really wasn't progressing. I just was having a nice leisurely day, but the harder I skied, if I didn't fall once or twice, I really wasn't pushing myself to improve. And while I wouldn't recommend that, especially in that sport, because that can become painful, you learn rather quickly, especially as it starts to hurt, that making mistakes aren't the funnest things. But especially in business, you need to push yourself, and I think that's true here. I recently had a conversation with one of our directors of our public facilities, and as they continually try to retool and to do better with their programs, we ask them to be a little aggressive, certainly as it relates to doing better with customer service and try new things. And, you know, mistakes are going to be made, commissioners, but I think if you learn from those mistakes, it can be very powerful. So I'll stop there, because I've got a lot more to say with there, but I think it's okay to make mistakes. Just learn from them.
That's great. Appreciate that. I think that's very true. Great thought. Appreciate that. Let's go to public comments, and I understand we have a presentation from Lynn Carter. She's going to give us a presentation on the Ogden Botanical Gardens related to USU. Thank you for being here. Time's yours.
Thank you.
Lynn?
You have 37 minutes.
What if I take it? Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Lynn Carter, here on behalf of the Utah State University Weber County Extension and the Ogden Botanical Gardens. I want to share my perspective and extend my appreciation for your support of the USU Extension and the unique Ogden Garden. With me today is Helen Muntz, the Horticultural Agent, Utah State University Weber Morgan County Extension. I appreciate Helen. She asked me to do this.
Lynn, will you pull that mic down?
Certainly.
Pull that a little closer.
Is that better?
That's better. Much better.
I appreciate Helen's asking me to do this. It was a stretch for me. As a kid, do you remember being asked to go to the yard on a blistering hot Utah summer day and weed the garden? Or drag a water hose with a single sprinkler from place to place to water a huge yard? To that add, mowing the lawn and using hand clippers to trim the edges of the lawn, bordering the driveway, a fence line, and a house? These were years before ground cloths, automatic sprinkler systems, and string trimmers, but these were the years that I learned to love working in the yard, largely because of my dad. When the work was finished, Dad would ask me to step back and look at what I had accomplished. He said the yard would say thank you. Maybe it was his trick he used to keep me working and learning, but to this day, in my yard or volunteering in the Ogden Garden, I stand back and still receive thanks and satisfaction for my efforts by viewing what I accomplished. Before I retired from a career in clinical chemistry in 2017, I decided to heed sage advice not to retire from something, but rather to something. I decided to apply to the Utah State University Master Gardener Volunteering Training Program. It was inexpensive, local, and comprehensive. It included both classroom and hands-on field training provided by a degreed USU Extension instructor. After six months of classroom training and lab work, the practical training began with 40 hours of supervised volunteer garden projects. The Master Gardener Volunteer Training Program was perfect for me. Presently, I am serving as a Master Gardener Docent at the Ogden Botanical Gardens, where I share what I've learned with local gardeners, conduct tours of the garden, and work with teams of like-minded people to design, plant, and maintain those gardens. The pay I receive is exceptional. Two quick examples from last summer. While tending a garden bed, I observed a photo shoot of a newborn, and her parents posed among the flowers in the cottage garden. When the shoot was completed, the photographer and parents stopped where I was working and said, "Thank you. Thank you for the work you do here. This is a beautiful place for pictures." Another came when a lovely woman walking her fuzzy dog stopped me in the rose garden and said that she walked there with her pup every morning, spring through fall. She said being in these beautiful gardens was the best part of every day, and she thanked me. Many years have passed since I worked with my dad in our yard. Still, as a volunteer in the garden, the lookback brings a thank you from the garden itself, and even better, sometimes from someone who's visiting there. It happens just as Dad said it would. It wasn't a trick, after all. It's more of a small garden-grown miracle. Thank you for your continued support of the garden, the Utah State Extension, and the many Ogden Botanical Garden patrons. We appreciate your help.
Thank you for being here. Commissioners, comments?
Lynn, thanks so much for your service and your example. You know, there are a lot of wonderful stories that can be learned in many of the things that have been written in our past about gardening as it relates to what you've just said, as well as grafting and other things, and how it applies to life. And I think holding on to those gives you time to think and reflect, and especially there are so many people who tell us how beautiful those Ogden Botanical Gardens are, remembering back to when it was bare ground, to what it's become now. It's used extensively for a variety of different things, including weddings, but also just places or times for people to go and meditate or reflect. You've made that in part a wonderful place to be, and so I want you to know that I appreciate it, and I appreciate you. Lynn was at arm's reach, a neighbor, so to speak. Once removed, maybe, but it's always been a good example, one who they've done well by their neighbors as well, and so I appreciate yours and Stephen's example and who you've been. It was a marked place in my life, and I just want to tell you that personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenkins?
Yeah, Commissioner Frohr, Chair Frohr. How much do we give those botanical gardens every year?
Well, that comes out of the USU Extension. It'd probably be answered by our director there better than me.
Actually, I think we have an allocation of funds we give right directly to those gardens.
It's actually for Helen's salary, because she helps to make sure that all of the main bits happens there.
And how much is that?
Thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, that's right.
A little bit more than that.
That goes to salary, right?
Correct.
Yep.
Well, the reason I question that is we, this year, we debated whether to continue that or not. That's not part of Weber County, you know, and now those gardens are built and done and up and running. We really wonder whether we have a responsibility to maintain that 35,000. Could you speak to that? One of you?
Naomi, or either one of you?
Yeah, well, so...
Come to the mic. If you wouldn't mind coming up.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so my understanding was that 35 was actually an agreement with Ogden City, so it may be some support that way. I'm not sure. Naomi might have to clarify that a little bit. We have basically two seasonal gardeners, and we keep a manager, garden manager, there so that when, you know, I'm over two counties and the gardens, so then when I'm not around, we know we have someone there who's working with the city and trying to schedule everything that's going on there in terms of weddings and the classes and things that we do. So that's kind of part of where that goes into when we talk about salary, to have those seasonal gardeners help with maintenance. The bulk of it is the volunteers, so we have a rigorous Master Gardener program that Lynn spoke of to try and give them the training and the tools that they need to be able to help maintain these gardens and help with the classes and other community events and stuff like that. Did that help?
Yes, it does. So the city actually owns the gardens, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It is a city park.
Right, it is a city park.
Yes.
And that's, if you remember when we had this discussion, that was the very question we had, is if it's a city park and they own it, then why? And, you know, to get us started and everything, I have no problem with the fact that we gave some money to that, but I'm wondering why we maintain that as a county, you know, because it's a city park? And so that's a question. So really, this is a question that needs to be dealt with with the city, not with you folks, and I understand that.
Right, and it's mostly in agreement. So we have, USU presently owns the education building out there. The city coordinates with, when they schedule weddings and stuff for the pavilions and things like that. But we do all the mowing, we do all the planting and garden maintenance. They'll do the street, the parkway, so there's the parkway that goes right by lots of joggers and things, so they do some maintenance there, but a lot of it falls on USU, and it's just kind of an agreement from the beginning. But, yeah, I've been here three years now, and I'm still trying to answer that question a little bit, so I'm happy to help clarify as best I can and go back to the director of both the OBG and the USU BC, who currently I'm trying to fill his role here in Ogden, but he might be good, Jerry Gutsby, you probably have met him, but he might be helpful as well to answer some of those questions.
It would be well to get a report directly from Jerry. I know Jerry's been here for decades now, at least 20 years, and he'll have some history on this, and I think it'd be good, I would appreciate being updated, and some of this information to be introduced, especially because of, I think it'd be great to get Jerry involved and get some history there, but it'd be great.
Great. So I did try and delve into this because...
Go ahead.
And so I know that when the building was originally created, it was a donation from someone in the community, and it was given to USU, but it's a little bit awkward because it's given to USU with no funding to continue to maintain it. And so it was given on public property there for the city, but I think from the very beginning, it's been a question of who's going to maintain it. And my understanding, you know, we were just kind of told for USU, stay out of it, it's between the county and the city, but I do think recently there was a conversation, we need to pull up that original agreement and revisit that, because now there's new players, maybe, you know, there would be some better discussion at this point, because I think that that was never really clarified from the beginning of who's supposed to really maintain that. It makes sense to me, it would be the city, because it's city property, but I think that they didn't want to deal with it, and of course, the county doesn't want to deal with it. The problem is it was given as a gift from a donor, so I think at this point, we just don't want the building to become dilapidated and become an ice war, because that looks bad on everybody. So I'm not sure how we want to delve into that, but I know that we had looked it up. I was working with Jennifer Graham to look into this, and I, my understanding is we had found the agreement, but I haven't seen it yet, and I think a discussion needs to be made so we can decide how to move forward with that property.
And I think that's great, Naomi. Since, you know, USU Extension's under my portfolio, I think we should look at those original contracts, and then we can get back with, you know, work session or with the other commissioners and update them. You know, I can say personally, this is a true gem for, whether it's Ogden City or Weber County. I run that trail quite a bit through the summer and detour on occasion into the rose gardens and talk to a number of the people up there that are volunteers, that are trained by, as your master, by your master gardeners. I tell you, the service that we get from those people, and if you go through that parking lot on any given summer morning, there's a lot of people with out-of-state license plates from all over, so this is a true draw that, in my opinion, needs to continue. I think it's just a matter of us being comfortable with the agreement that we have with Ogden City and make sure that we all agree on the future, but in my opinion, that's something that we, between USU, Ogden City, and Weber County, we need to ensure that this continues. Because it's a true gem, and the volunteers out there, the people that run it, do a magnificent job. I mean, if you haven't been in the rose garden out there, when those roses are in bloom, it's truly breathtaking to see what they do.
Lynn, how many roses, how many rose bushes do we have now that you tend to? Do you know the number? It used to be 99.
It's around 300.
Around 300?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, it's amazing, and, you know, I appreciate the roses. My mother loved roses. She was a gardener. I spent a lot of time, and every time I go through that, I think of her, and I know that she appreciates. She went through there a few years ago before she died and was still amazed at the variety of roses and how well-cared they are, so it's a great thing you do for the city and the county, and, you know, I think we just work out the details, Commissioner Jenkins.
Sure, I want to look at it.
So...
I think that's wise.
So Jennifer, I'd love to see that agreement.
Did you ever look at that? Did you ever find it? I know it was being dug up, but...
Yeah, I think they all found it.
Okay.
I have a copy of that.
Yeah, if we could get copies, that'd be great. Is that all?
I just wanted to mention too, so my understanding is that the county gives a certain portion, and then the city gives a certain portion, and that funding was worked together for someone like Helen to have volunteers and whatnot so we can continue to maintain that property. So that's how that funding is being used, just so that you're aware.
Yep.
Great.
Thanks.
Great, thank you for that explanation. Okay, we're still in the public comment section of our agenda. Anybody else would like to come forward and make a comment at this time? Please come forward, and please give us your name and address, if you wouldn't mind.
Jill Hipwell, 585 South, 3600 West Avenue, West Weber. And I think this is where I need to bring this up.
Welcome.
How are you guys doing?
Hey.
First, I need to ask a question. Has the PRUD chapter been rewritten? It was brought up in 2014. I know there's been a few amendments, but has it actually been rewritten?
The PRUD?
Uh-huh.
Shawn?
Shawn? I think, Rick, do you know that? I think, Rick, why don't you come up and answer that?
It'll take care of my next question if it has been.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
The PRUD section has not been rewritten. There was some direction given by the previous county commission to look at making the PRUD an overlay zone, but that has been put on hold, and the current PRUD section is what was in place at that time.
Perfect. That's where I was going with this. Just wanted to make sure it didn't go through. Okay, in that PRUD overlay zone, I have a copy of the front page, and it's, I think, Mr. Ewer? Is that how you say his last name?
Charles. I know it's Charles. He's the one that kind of did it, and some of the key points he put in it was, Weber County's PRUD ordinance contains a carte blanche entitlement for any standard of any part of the land use code to be waived or modified for any PRUD with or without objective reason, whether by intent or by misunderstanding of the purpose and origination of the administrative PRUD-type ordinance. Weber County has allowed the current PRUD ordinance to be applied purely as a mechanism for waiver other stricter, for waiving other stricter requirements instead of a use of receiving better planned developments. By the very nature of the flexibility of the current PRUD code, nearly any decision made under this level of administrative discretion, whether for or against an applicant's proposal, can at least be construed to be arbitrary, if not also capricious, since it relies on a person's perception of what is or is not desirable and harmonious as opposed to objective review criteria. I know it's gone to legislative now rather than administrative, but he actually put at the bottom of this, that if the county desires it to remain a legislative decision, then the chapter should be rewritten with more objective criteria to remove the potential of the arbitrary decision-making. I do know that this passed, the Ogden Valley Planning Commission approved this overlay zone in 2018, and then so did also Weber County, I mean, western Weber County. I'm just curious why it got tabled after that, because I do believe there needs to be some improvement in that PRUD zone.
Rick, do you want to explain why?
I should.
That that's currently on hold?
So the current PRUD is an administrative review. It does come before you because it's a conditional use. The legislative portion that Ms. Hipwell is talking about, it was put on hold because the commission at that time felt like it's taking away some of the development rights from developers, and so to make it a legislative item, then you have to go through that process, and you take away the administrative tool that developers have, and so it makes it more restrictive and more difficult for development to happen, and so it was put on hold because they didn't feel like development should be impacted and to reduce the possibility for future development to happen to go through the legislative body.
So it never did make it to legislative?
Correct. No. No. No.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, but I still think it is something that we need to review at one point. I do believe there's, as how I have actually heard it, there's some loopholes and such. I would need to review it again, because it has been a while since I've been over it. One portion of that, though, that I think is a necessity for all subdivision parts, it's actually to do with streets. At least two points of access into a development is required if it contains more than 30 residents or otherwise required by the local fire emergency service authority. Per the 2015 International Fire Code, Appendix D, two approved fire access roads are required if there are more than 31 or two family home developments, but there is an exception if they've all got fire suppression systems. What if it's not a fire that happens out there? I personally believe that that needs to be put into, that should be a stipulation no matter what, that if there's over 30 homes, there should be another access. That's a scary thought, to not have a way out if something's going on, and so I don't even know where you'd go with that. I don't know if there's someone I need to talk to to maybe try and get that implemented.
Well, you know what I would suggest is that you get ahold of the chair of the West Weber County Planning Commission or any of the members, and obviously you have the right to attend one of those hearings, one of those meetings...
Okay.
...when they have public, and I'd give your input to the planning commission.
Okay.
And then what they would do is if they feel this necessitates a change, they would come before us through Mr. Grover, and they could propose an ordinance change to that particular zone.
Okay, thank you so much.
So, but yeah, I would start with the planning commission. That's really, that's really the people we depend on to make the decisions...
Okay.
...and make recommendations to us.
All right, okay, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you for being here. Additional public comments? We appreciate the involvement. Any comments from commissioners before we move on? Oh, here we go. Okay.
Hello, four-year, you know me. Okay.
Welcome.
Hey, how are you doing? Ralph Price, 636 Sixth Street. How you doing, commissioners? Hillbilly, where are you going? Okay, I just got to know that for you, you have an interest in this. Do you know that how involved I am with the reggae with homelessness and people with diverse situations and everything? I'm just appalled to know and find out this last week and everything that through the city, there has been some things put into play and that Lauren, the fantastic work she's doing over at the Lantern House, and you're on the board, and this...
Correct.
And so you know that how important that is in functioning as we do our work to be able to try to make the situation better. Well, we were now talking with and got so that Taggart out at O-Tech and everything has given scholarships, so zero income, so we're making steps and strides towards putting in 51 families. We've put into houses in the last month and a half, but they all started with the overflow at the Lantern House. It is such a key in us being able to do our work that we do. I'm out at 4:30 in the morning till 9:00 every morning. I'm out from 5:00 till 2:00 in the morning every night, working in the streets and working the things, making sure there's a chance for people to be able to have, a chance to be able to have coverance and having, staying warm, being able to take steps to put their lives back together. We got people coming out of prisons, jails, and this, that are now back to being productive members of society, but they have children that they fought for, they've got back, and they've changed their lives, and these kids, 17 of my kids that are in '87 that we put back into school are on the honor rolls in National Honor Societies. I've got 15 that are on the dean's list and stuff like this. These people are looking to change and change the prodigy behind them, and it starts with the overflow and the chance to be able to have somebody believing in them, somebody they can trust, and belief in themselves so that they will go ahead and take the steps necessary to correct mental health, the social problems, and the substance abuse problems that they have had to deal with. Now, us as people that are involved with them on a daily basis and gain their trust so that they listen to us, we have to be able to have the concrete things that we can say, okay, here, this is how we start, and how we go. Yes, it may not be our apartment, yes, it may not be, but it may only be the floor of the kitchen area at the Lantern House that they're kind enough to be able to have, and we are serving Morgan, Weber, and Davis County, and then for them to be able to say in the middle of winter here that as March 1st, we're going to close down, that we can't have that facility. We had 90 people at, the day before yesterday, staying at the Lantern House and on that floor and everything, 30 of them kids and everything. I don't see how, in any shape or form, that you can come to a conclusion that as of March 1st, we're going to take that space away from us so that 90 people and this, 30 of them kids, be able to be out, back out on the streets. We've worked too hard along the Riverbank long, going all the way to Slatersville and stuff, you guys, and I know that Hillbilly here, Jenkins, I call Hillbilly Scott Jenkins, but anyway, he heads up the commission and everything with all of us nonprofits. We're doing great work. We're out there beating our bush. That's our leader right there. I'm here today because I'm appalled, and I'm not a liar, and I don't want you guys or the city, but I want your influence upon the city to be able to change this. If we want to look to go ahead and take away that space and everything, it has to be at a reasonable time. On the national news as well as our local news, they're telling people not to go outside, not to go out, and not to go to school, not to go to work, if you can work. We're talking about putting these people out in the middle of the night and this. It was 17 degrees last night. How do I know I was out there? And this, people, and I got bus drivers, they talk to me, and it's snowing... And this, people, and I got bus drivers, they talk to me, and it's snowing and everything. I don't see how you're out here. I said, the people live out here. I'm trying to get them in. And this, I can be out here for hours. I go to my nice warm apartment, and I turn the heat up. And this, they're going to take away that space. It is critical to us that are on the ground out here, doing the work we're doing and the changes that are being made. We are beating Salt Lake County. Weber County's beating Salt Lake County. They're getting all this stuff out there. I'm trying to fight that they give some of the stuff to us in Weber County here, but with the little resources that we do have here, we are making a difference. We've gone from 39 to 81% of the people we're working with, we're putting into transition in their lives so that they can go to school and they can certify, they can have careers, not just piecemeal jobs. But to take away what they're talking about their homes, I don't know of one of you guys or the one of the city council I'll be talking to later tonight and everything that will leave their animal and their pet outside at night, more or less put people out there. So, I am here today and I'm just asking you that any influence that you have, that you help us. You help the people that are out here like myself and others. Scott, what you've got going with all the group right here. We cannot close those doors March 1st. It has to, if you want to revisit that in May, June or July, when we can put up a tent or something like this and it'd be okay and is reasonable, but on a humanitarian purpose. We've got to find a way that in two weeks, those doors do not close. And this, I've already got talked with contractors, Big D and different ones, late in construction, whatever we got to do, we're going to find a way to do it, but we need to keep those doors open. And that's the only reason that we have the success that we have. We have Mortensen and Taggart and these people at the colleges willing to open up education is because we started with the overflow fashion at the Lantern House. We got to keep that. And whatever you can do, I implore you, please, please, back up, and you're on the board so you know the importance of that. And this, we need that. We need that. You guys know how committed I am to us and that Lauren is and all of us that are out here and doing the groundwork and we work with these individuals. We help to establish again self-esteem in themselves and a desire for their prodigy to succeed, for them to succeed, for them to put in the work to come out of mental health, come out of substance abuse itself and be able to have something. But it starts with what little things we can give them. We don't want them on the riverbank. We got them in for you. Don't take that away from us. March 1st is they're talking about closing those doors. Let's get that moved back to a reasonable time when it's better inclined with the weather and stuff. And thank you, Scott, for all the work you do, Harvey, and for you for helping us, okay?
Thanks, Ralph. I can tell you this, the Lantern House Board is very much aware of the issue you brought up. We're working with Ogden City, the powers that be. We're working on some additional funding to cure this for the long term, not just the short term. There's a lot of people involved with that decision, and hopefully, we can make the decision to keep those doors open for at least a period of time, what's more conducive to outside weather.
I applaud you for that, and I applaud you for the long-term solution, but I want you to know, I represent the ones that were out here on the ground, and we need those doors not closing too quick. We've given our word, we've given our dedication, we've given our time. I've been in and out of the house both four or five times and everything because you know the extent of what I have going on with me, but I have a commitment and I have given my word to these people. They trust me. I was walking with Mayor Caldwell and I was working with three of the city councilmen. They'd say, you're like a superstar out here. I know, I said, no, I'm not. I'm a friend. I'm somebody they can believe in, somebody they know. I'm in here, and this is a city issue, but I'm talking to the county because those doors cannot close. We need to have those doors open. We're not talking about floor space, we're not talking about mats, and that's, we're talking about people. We're talking about children. And this, your dog can't be outside. These people can't either. Keep those doors open for us.
Ralph, we appreciate your dedication, your interest in this.
Thanks, Ralph.
You do a great job for the community. Additional comments from the public? You know, we've had pretty good public participation today, Commissioners. It's good.
Yes.
Additional comments from the Commissioners before we move ahead?
So, Gage, you say the Board of the Lantern House is on top of this?
We're, yeah, we're looking for a negotiated agreement with Ogden City, basically the fire department, to make sure we can maintain the, at least the access. It's a fire issue problem.
Is it?
Yeah.
But look, it was Salt Lake County, took those warehouses, and they're using even the warehouses. We only have one spot.
Oh, you'll keep us, you'll keep us abreast of that?
Yeah, I think we've got to, I've got to check the next board meeting, but it should be next Wednesday or the Wednesday, yeah.
Okay.
We, the last report I had from the Director was that he felt that he was getting real close to an agreement with Ogden City Fire.
Right.
And State Fire.
Good.
So, I'm hopeful, Ralph. We'll keep you posted. Commissioners will keep you posted on that as we.
Thanks for caring, Ralph.
You know I'll be on you.
Yeah, that's, I know. I appreciate you caring, but I'm going to tell you this, you need to slow down that wheelchair when you're moving around here. You're going a little too quick.
Long as, long as you.
Holy mackerel.
Stop walking through our hill.
Yeah, you wheel around pretty good with that, so. I'm not getting in your way, I know that. Okay, Commissioners, no other public comments, nobody coming forward, then we'll move on to consent items on our agenda, and that would be Agenda F, consent items. Request for approval of warrants, number one, that would be number 2412 through 2424 and 447168 through 447380 in the amount of $489,861.91. Number two, request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $161,603.22. Three, request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on February 4th, 2020. Number four, request for approval of the ACH payment to U.S. Bank in the amount of Five, request for approval of new business license. Six, request for approval of new beer licenses. Seven, request for approval of retirement agreement by and between Weber County and Ralph Brooks. Number eight, request for approval of a grant extension by and between Weber County and the Utah Department of Works for Services for the extension of funding for the Weber County ICAN program, serving families experiencing intergenerational poverty through June 30, 2020. That's our consent items. Questions, Commissioners, before I go to Ricky?
I have something after Ricky.
Okay.
The question I have, Commissioner, you know, I've always gone through the warrants and the purchase orders, but when you look at this, a U.S. Bank statement on the ACH payments, you know, it's hard to give oversight on that. The first statement, here's for $982, and you know, it's small, and they're all small purchases, so you don't worry about that too much. But when you get to the second one, then I see things like Biz Furniture and DLT Solutions, and you know, that's $18,000, and Webster Aunt Store for $16,000. Well, I don't, I don't know how to give oversight to that. How do we check those to make sure those are appropriate? Because they go around the normal purchasing, and this just goes on one of our cards. So, how do I know, Ricky, if those are appropriate or not?
Any, every P-card purchase has to be reported on a P-card log, and that, that is submitted monthly up to the person, the P-card holder supervisor. And elected officials have them, those are all reviewed by me, and my P-card log is reviewed by our county attorney. So, those are done at a supervisor level. In addition to that, we have an audit program where we go and look at the P-card logs.
Mm-hmm.
Or especially, we look at all P-card logs for higher risk, individuals who may have not had compliance in the past. So, we go and do that, but we also audit on a sample basis everybody's P-cards.
Now, this is kind of tough. There's 41 pages of P-cards.
Yeah.
And this is down. This is a low month. Normally, it's considerably more than this. And that's just really hard to review that and get a feel for what's happening there.
We do rely on the supervisors and managers to take a close look at the P-card transactions to make sure they're authorized, and we do have purchase limits. I believe the limits we have in place are 2,000 per transaction, and then I want to say $5,000 or $10,000 per month. You can seek out temporary increases, working through the purchasing off, or department to get those if, in a special unusual circumstance. But generally, the larger purchases will be working with the purchasing division to make sure that all of the proper reviews are being done, obtaining bids and quotes.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Harvey?
So, when I was out at the Golden Spike, I think my limit per month was $2,000, and I was always very careful because I knew that there was, I had Jennifer Graham making sure that every purchase, every purchase was qualified. For me, Commissioner Jenkins, having been involved in this for a number of years now with this, it really comes down to the oversight that I use currently is confidence in the people we hire. I have confidence, and I can only speak to the, to the divisions that are in my portfolio, which would be the attorneys and the culture parks and recreation, but I have tremendous confidence in the way they run their budgets that we approve. I have confidence in the way they're purchasing and they watch every dollar. I learned of a situation this morning where there was quite an ordeal over 75 cents because a purchase came through for 75 cents and they wanted accountability for that 75 cents. And so, when we look at these and we can't see the detail in the smaller amounts, we don't worry about as much. I know that in this portfolio, they worry about even 75 cents, and I'm comfortable with that. If there's another, if there's another situation that should come up where there is cause for mistrust, then we deal with that through our human resource department, not through the P-card. So, that's, that's my explanation with regards to my portfolio on this particular item. Ricky, I know they do arbitrary audits. I had that happen to me a lot by purchasing, even after Jennifer and those, I'd get those come back frequently, hey, listen, what about this or who was involved in this? And so, it's very detailed. And I was very comfortable, Ricky, with, with what happened there, but I respect very much that Commissioner Jenkins is wanting to get into the detail of this because the same way, these purchases come through on this card, and the cumulative amount through the whole county is reflected in that $254,000 for this last month of those payments. That's all $50 here and $130 here and maybe $1,000 there. And again, those bigger purchases that are made on the P-card above $2,000 are usually because it's through the purchasing agent. You know, Jason Horn or those folks, they, they're the ones that Ricky has decided to increase those limits. But if I were to ask any other purchases, I know, I don't think anybody in our division has anything that they could do over $5,000. They go through procurement, they go through the bid process, and just accumulation of a bunch of smaller charges for, for little things, you know, when they pay an office supply thing or, or, you know, supplies or Band-Aids or a million different things that'd be out there. Yard, you know, yard trimmer or something would be simple. That's how I, that's just so you know that, that's how I justify it when I'm looking at these every month.
Yeah, thank you for that. Commissioner Jenkins?
That's my very question. You just made a statement that these all go through the bid process, and I would say, how do you know that? You don't know that.
Excuse me, now wait a second. I don't think we bid out every pencil, but I do know that the bigger items are bid because we used to do it. I used to get, I was asked, I was asked by Ms. Graham, did you get three bids when you, before you made that purchase? So, I think it's the effectiveness of the supervisor. So, I don't know that. You're right.
Okay.
But it has to do with the effectiveness of the supervisor.
That's the point. And when they put it through on the P-card, it takes our ability to give oversight and it kind of takes it away from us.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Yes?
I can give you an example. For the golf tournament last year, I ordered some balls, and it was a sponsor, so we didn't actually pay for it, but after they gave us the money to pay for the balls, the sponsor, I bought the balls, and Jason called me and said, did you get a bid for this? So, our P-cards are being watched by, starting with you looking at my P-card, and then Candace doing the audit, and Jason reviewing as well. I feel like there is, it's being covered on every.
It's being covered on. Well, I sit here and look at one, I just kind of thumb down through here, and I stopped on one I didn't understand. And it says here, UDOH. So, I assume that's Utah Department of Health. And it says Bureau Manager Media Services, Salt Lake City, $1,777. Well. Department of Health? I have no idea. I haven't got a clue what that item is for $1,777. And I'd probably be willing to bet you right now that Jason doesn't have a clue what that is.
Where is he? Well, we can get ahold of Brian Baron and, yeah.
Well, no, no, we don't have to. The, I'm, I'm kind of digging down here a little bit on a principle, and this goes back to what Shelley was saying. And the principle is, on our P-cards, you know, it was only a few months ago that our P-cards hit an all-time high. I don't know what it was, don't remember what it was, but I remember it was, wow, look at that. And I don't know is our level of scrutiny on P-cards is as high as it is on regular purchases, because we go over the regular purchases, you know, they come right in.
Every, every.
Yeah, and we sit and review each one of those line items. But here, I've got 41 pages, and as it's listed, many of them are undescribable. Here's one for $10 for Del Taco and Arby's on Subway. So, somebody's eating on the county out there, and I'm assuming that they're all okay, but you don't know. So, is there any better way to review these? I guess that's what I'm asking.
I will get with Jason and Scott and make sure that we're comfortable with the process and that we fully understand it, and then we'll come back to you and explain.
No, I think that's really good, Ricky, that we understand the process. That's really what I'm asking here, because this seems to go around our normal process here. And when you start going through these, it's so hard to identify some of these that it's tough.
Yeah, I will, I'm making a note right now and will.
Thank you, sir.
So, Ricky, since you brought that up, on these P-cards, don't they require some type of supervisor approval at some point?
After the fact, yeah.
After the fact, right.
And the individual has to print, they don't just make up the statement, say, in Word or Excel, they have to print it from the bank and perform the reallocations on the bank state, system themselves. So, it's very difficult for them to provide a false report. That would be, get tagged right away.
Yeah, that's my opinion. I mean, I haven't signed a lot of these, but the ones I have, you know, have had a receipt attached to it, it had the purpose of the meeting, the expenditure. So, I'm assuming if the supervisor is taking the time to review that, they can be obviously acknowledged or questioned at that point in time. So, I'd agree with Commissioner Harvey that we depend on our supervisors, our managers to make the determination about how important it is to this county to make sure we have transparency using taxpayer dollars. And, but yeah, I'd appreciate you getting with Jason. Commissioner Jenkins, I appreciate you bringing that up. Is there any immediate concerns you would have on, on any of those charges that you'd have a reason to, to question them being authorized or not?
No, no, there aren't. It's just, this is the first time I've tried to dig down into them. And you know, this is like Weber Human Services. When you tried to dig down in theirs, their expenses are almost impossible to dig down into and get a handle on. Well, I sit here and look at this, and I see one, two, three, four, five, six charges in a row, seven charges for Costco. Well, I have no idea what these charges are.
Right.
And when you say, well, a supervisor has approved those apparently, well, maybe a supervisor and they're, one of the people they employ said, let's go out and buy furniture at Costco. I mean, I don't know what it is. You see what I mean?
So, I might have a hunch on that one. I don't know who that particular card is, but we buy things from Costco and Sam's Club all the time. There are ancillary food items and things like that when they stock up for concession stands and other things like that. Now, I'm not certain on those exact charges, but I have the faith in.
Sure.
That Jennifer's auditing or Duncan's auditing those charges that are, that are done from our concessions department.
Well, let's put it this way, I just want to review the process of why we use those cards.
I would.
I think Ricky's right on.
I think having, listen, and I'm coming from a history of 26 years, but I think it's refreshing to have a fresh set of eyes to say, is there a better way? I'm not pushing back on this at all.
Okay, that's great.
I'm just saying, I'm just trying to use some history there. I think it's great, a new, fresh set of eyes at this. If there's a better way to do this, I trust the business acumen of Commissioner Jenkins and Commissioner Faur. and Commissioner Faur. If there's a better way to do it and especially more efficient way to do it, I think it'd be great.
Yeah, Rick, if you'd give back to us, I would agree with that 100%. Never hurts to review our policies to make sure that we don't need to tighten them up somewhat. You know, there's an old saying that I used in the Capitol lot, which was trust but verify. And I think that's what we're doing. We have to trust our supervisors, but then we want to verify that what they're doing is proper. So I think that's what Commissioner Jenkins is saying. Let's just, let's just verify because that's, at the end of the day, that's our, the three of our responsibilities is to make sure that this county is being run in an efficient manner and that would go especially with the taxpayer dollars going out for Weber County Services. So anyway, thank you for that discussion. Commissioner Jenkins, anything else?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent items.
Hmm, we have a motion to approve.
Second, but with the comment? On the consent items, I just, I would feel remiss if I didn't do this. As a young boy and growing up in far corner over there in the terrace by the big silver water tank.
Well, I know where that is.
Yeah. There was always a guy that, when I went to the Bruce Musgrave Ballpark, was always helping young boys learn how to play baseball. His name was Gus, Gus Brooks. Well, things, he helped me through my whole baseball youth. And later on, his son called me and Gus had just retired from Quastar and he was in his 50s and said, Harv, I'm going to get a little personal here, but he says, my dad's retired and he's driving my mom crazy, he needs to go back to work, can you help me? And we hired him out at the Golden Spike Arena. It was the best thing that ever happened for their marriage, Gus kept working. But a guy that was in his 50s and still had a lot of great work knowledge, helped the Golden Spike for years and years and years, and he's been out there for 20 something Gus's health has started to decline and, you know, he was walking around carrying a dolly, oxygen dolly. But he's hopping in the tractors and he was probably the hardest worker, he was consistent. When everybody else had to take a break, Gus was still out cleaning stalls and shoveling and doing things and, and now it's time for him to retire. It's here at number seven as Ralph Brooks and I just wanted to publicly tell Ralph, thank you for being an example through my whole life on the baseball field and also out in the stalls at the Golden Spike. You're a dear friend, I wish you and your family great and it's a retirement agreement, so I'm a little melancholy. I don't have a lot of, I don't have a lot of boyhood heroes like Ralph left, but since his name was here and I've got this privilege right now, I wanted to use it. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for those comments. Sure. Ricky, before I place a motion, did you want to give any details on the warrants?
Yeah, we had 13 purchase orders this week for $162,000. 62% of that or $100,000 is for the library and that's E-media open order for the year. 16% or $25,000 was for the transfer station and that's tires for the tipping floor. 11% or $18,000 was for IT and that was primarily for switches for the sheriff's office. As far as checks, we issued 226 checks this week for $490,000. A bunch of small, smaller amounts, 17% or $83,000 was for the jail and that went toward food, utilities and building maintenance. 15% or $73,000 was escrow release primarily to Sunset Equestrian. And then 9%, 46, or $46,000 was for the ice sheet, which covered utilities and a boiler replacement. 7% or $33,000 is for the conference center and that is, was primarily for their ticketing system as well as some ragtime talent expense. And then two items at 6% or $30,000, dispatch 911 for telephone service and equipment and then the library and that went towards utilities, materials and building maintenance.
Thank you. Ricky, questions from any of the discussion Randy or Ricky just had before we move on? Okay, all those in favor of the consent items as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Consent items have been approved. Let's move on to action items G. One, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Chapman Music Inc. for the 2020 Valentine Dinner Dance Entertainment. Ms. Bybee, you're up.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So this is with an agreement for the annual Valentine's Dinner Dance that we do with Caleb Chapman, Crescent Big Band. We've used, we've actually, four out of the five years, we've actually contracted with Caleb to, to provide the music for the, for the dinner dance that we, that we host. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but Caleb, you know, the Crescent Band is made up of high school students throughout the state that make up, and they're, they're just, they're actually renowned actually nationally. They travel all over. In fact, when I talked to Caleb, he wanted, he's like, I just need to know if we're for sure going to do this and sign this contract because if not, we have an invitation to take the kids on this date to Puerto Rico and we'll go play in Puerto Rico. So anyway, just, just a great group of kids, extremely talented and learn a lot from Caleb himself, but exceptional light, so a lot of fun.
Thank you for that presentation. Commissioners?
You know, this is a full orchestra. And these high school students are some of the best in the country. It's, it's, Tim, it's worth writing about that we have such fantastic Benny Goodman, Stan Kenton, Maynard Ferguson, Count Basie Entertainment still existing right here in Ogden, Utah. And it's being perpetuated by this Caleb Chapman and it's a 16-piece.
No, it's actually 30, 30-piece.
Sorry, a little low, but I, all the horns, all the woodwinds, all the, it's just phenomenal. It's a really, really great, it's a great feeling in there with a full orchestra. People get all dude it up in their tuxes and their fancy dresses and suits and, and Ralph, you ought to come and wheel that chair around and move things around. I think you'd love it.
Thanks for the invitation, I'll be there. You and I go on.
Well, I'm not dancing with you, let me be absolutely clear with that.
Yeah, you'll see about that.
Yeah, don't jump the conclusions, sir. All right, anything else? So I'm assuming this is a paid as you go function.
Yes.
What's it cost?
Yes, it's, it's $80 per couple and that includes, of course, the dinner and the dance. Yeah, dancing.
Well worth it with that type of entertainment.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, if you, if you're so inclined.
Does Harvey ask me, you're paying Harvey, right?
Yep.
Okay. What was that to do with?
I think you got a date. Go ahead, Commissioner Harvey.
I'll make a motion, we approve the contract by and between Weber County and Caleb Chapman for the Valentine's Dance.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Harvey.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. Any further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Cassie, you have a contract.
Got a question, can you comment at all on those things like that?
Can you comment on those?
Yeah, like that, that one with the music coming for the Valentine's Day, I think.
No, but you can go offline and get Ms. Bybee to, you know, explain that to you out in the hallway if you'd like.
It was just a good suggestion to you guys. Just Joe McQueen just died and as you're having this going on as Valentine's is like every month, could there be something put in there with all the knowledge of Joe McQueen? Is that what I'm just saying?
We've, we've had Joe McQueen play several times at the conference center and the theater both. Yes, I realize that.
Black History Month, if we could try to integrate some of the, some minority factor into the Valentine's Day with Chapman.
Well, the following week, we are doing Ragtime and we're doing that for Black History Month, so you can come and join us there on the 21st and 22nd.
I don't need to be there, I just want Joe McQueen.
Okay.
Now, that's, I think we're all looking forward to Ragtime. So Ralph, just so we're clear, any of those type of productions and recognition for certain people, the, our executive staff, Marty, Jennifer and Cassie at the conference center do a fantastic job. My suggestion is you get with them, with your suggestions. And I, I would say probably 99% chance they already have it covered in one form of another. If not in the past, they will in the future, so appreciate you bringing those up. Okay, thank you, Cassie. Let's go on to item two, request for approval of contract by and between Weber County and Marie Tarbo for the OMT artistic director for the 2020 season. Ms. Bybee, back to you.
Yes, so this is the contract for our artistic director with Ogden Musical Theater and this is Marie Tarbox. We've, we asked her when we first formed for, four years ago, Ogden Musical Theater, we asked her to come on as the artistic director and we go to, we do a contract each year with her for those services that she offers. And this year, we have the full season, so we have a Ragtime that's actually happening, you know, here in a, in a couple of weeks, but then we have Into the Woods, that's our summer show, our main show, and then we're doing Five Carols for Christmas again. Then we have two master classes in between that, so we have a full, full season this year.
Perfect. Commissioners?
We're so lucky to have Marie Tarbox, even in our community. This is a talent that's nationally known, Tim, another one, nationally known gal. Her name is hallowed on the streets of New York because of her artistic and her talent and ability and she's right here in our little community and she gives of her time very, very freely and for, for our local community in the arts. And so it'd be an honor when you're ready, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll motion, we approve the contract by and between Weber County and Marie Tarbox for the Ogden Musical Theater 2020 season.
Thank you. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Jenkins. Any discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Looks like we're on to agenda item three, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Weber School District to hold the Weber School District Mesa Day at the Golden Spike Center. Mr. Duncan Olson.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Yeah, this contract is between us and the Weber School District. It's really just our district rates that we have in place for them to come and hold their Mesa Day. We're, we're excited to continue this tradition that we've been doing with them to, to help spread the math and science and, and get these kids excited about it.
Great. Is that the entire district, I'm assuming?
I believe so.
Great. It is. Questions?
Another great program for the people of Weber County Schools, the youth of Weber County Schools and I compliment the leaders who put this together every year. It's great. It's a great, fun thing to go see if you haven't ever seen it.
What are the dates on that Duncan? Do you know?
Um, not off the top of my head.
Just an idea, I mean, then fairly soon?
It's in, yeah, it's in a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks.
First part of March. It's, it's to be held on the April 7th is the, is the Mesa Day.
Thank you for that. Questions, comments, Commissioners?
I'd make a motion to approve item G3, the contract between Weber County and Weber School District for Mesa Days.
Thank you. Second. Commissioner Jenkins makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Harvey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Item four, request for approval of contract by and between Weber County and the Weber School District to hold the 2020 STEM Fair at the Golden Spike Event Center. Mr. Olson, you're up again.
Yeah, same, same type of contract. This is just for their STEM Fair, so there's more of the technology implemented into this day at the district, so same thing, district rates.
Yeah, that's great to see the school district take advantage of our asset out there.
Absolutely.
Commissioners? Okay, discussion, questions? Commissioners?
Motion to approve the STEM, the STEM Fair for the Golden Spike Event Center for 2020.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Harvey.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. Any discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, passes. Thank you. Item five, I don't see Charlotte here.
I'm happy to help present this.
Okay, let's move on then with request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and the DTO for a professional services agreement for public relations, marketing and communications consultant for the sheriff's office. Since Charlotte's not here, go ahead.
Charlotte asked if I would be willing to present, she was taking care of some budget issues. So the county currently has an agreement with the DTO group to provide public relations, marketing and communications services. And they do that on a countywide basis, but as things that have been happening at the sheriff's office, the sheriff oversees quite a bit and a lot of the things that he oversees, the public is, takes a great interest in and would like to know about what is going on. And so I wanted to read this one statement from the contract because I believe it's important to, to know why we are proposing to add an additional contract between the county and the sheriff's office. It says, whereas the Weber County Sheriff's Office has since identified a need for additional public relations services in order to increase transparency, foster public trust and educate Weber County residents about the ongoing operations at the sheriff's office, which include quite a few things, corrections, enforcement, crime scene investigations, homeland security, animal control, the animal shelter and other support services. The services that DTO would be providing, videography services, photography services, help with production of recruitment materials, crisis communication services, which is a great addition, and then management of social media channels on behalf of the sheriff's office. And then developing a public trust campaign, which includes development of a coordination plan with the local press and monthly newsletters to citizens. So this would be a three, a one-year agreement with an option to extend for an additional two years and we're proposing this to you for consideration and possible approval.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Questions, Commissioners?
Question I have, Commissioner Faur, this is your portfolio.
Yes.
Are you in favor of this? It's 120,000 bucks, that's $10,000 a month. That's a pretty hefty contract for these kind of services for the county or for the sheriff, I mean, I'm sorry.
For the sheriff.
It would be up to, up to $120,000. It can't be a flat fee according to the RFP that was issued for this. It has to be an itemized billing each month.
Yeah, and that's, that was my understanding too, Commissioners, is that this is a pay-as-you-go basis, it's not a set contract, is that right?
Correct, it is not a set monthly amount.
So when this originally was discussed, the numbers that, that were discussed, what, six months ago, were probably closer to 50 to 60,000.
Well, yeah, that's my recollection.
And so it has grown somewhat since that. I, I am a believer in the DTO group, I think they do a great job. I would say that we need to make sure that, that we monitor the results we're getting from this contract at any given month and, and I, the sheriff has promised me that that would happen. I do feel that the sheriff has done a good job this last six months in transparency and building public trust. He's invited the press to tour the facility on at least one occasion, if not more. I think he's being more public active in terms of the animal shelter, the jail, the things that have caused some controversy the last number of years in this county. So I, I think, in my opinion, this is a good move. At the same time, we need to verify that we're getting the results that, that we expect from this contract.
A couple of things I would add in provisions that, because we've also thought about those concerns, Commissioner Jenkins, is one thing that was added to the contract is that a requirement that DTO will develop a benchmark measuring plan to assess and prioritize the needs of the sheriff's office that includes project work plans, due dates, key milestones and other measurable deliverables. That has to be done within the first six months of the agreement. As far as the invoicing, we put in a provision that says, DTO shall submit invoices on a monthly basis that specifically describe the services performed for which compensation is claimed and any such other information as may be reasonably required by the county in order to properly review, evaluate and process the invoice. And then finally, this is an at-will contract, it can be terminated at any time for no cause.
Mr. Jenkins?
You know, I like to support sheriff a lot, but when he puts a, when he puts a figure in there of 120 grand, I just can't hardly, I'm choked on it. You know, and I understand, you say, well, it doesn't mean you will use it. Okay, I understand that. I don't know. I have a hard time voting aye on something like this when it's so open-ended. Yeah, it's just that simple. No more than that.
And from my perspective, and I've been involved with this from discussions with sheriff and his staff, you know, I have asked for metrics to be put forth, actually the first 30 days of this contract. 30 days of this contract, what they're hoping to accomplish, so that we have some, you know, I hate open-ended contracts without any definition of what we're trying to accomplish objectives. So I've asked the sheriff to provide me within the first 30 days with DTO the objectives where they think that the public needs to be informed, and really the duties, potential outcomes of that contract. So, and again, as Mr. Crockett has mentioned, that we can terminate this at will if we don't feel we're getting the result. But I do have faith in the DTO group performing. I do have faith that the sheriff's department will come up with objectives that, that make sense for the public outreach and the public relations that's so widely needed. Commissioner Harvey, comments, questions?
I'm trying to be thoughtful on this and yet support, but take into consideration the cautions that Commissioner Jenkins has put in there about open-endedness. I know that there's a lot that has to be, that has to grow and be considered as it relates to our law enforcement and with especially emergency services. I think the newspaper does a wonderful job getting the word out, but the newspaper can only get that word out on paper the next day. They do have an electronic version, and sometimes breaking news is just that, breaking news, but I don't know if that's the place that most people go to as it relates to that. It's Twitter and Facebook and Instagram and all the other things that come to that. And that's the strong point of electronic media and the DTO for messaging. I don't know that sheriffs, they're good at what their jobs are. I don't know that that's messaging necessarily. I mean, I know there are some within there that are good at it, but not, they don't do it as a profession. So I'm trying to balance, and it is a lot of money. I, I'll give you that. I'd like to, I think with what you've said, Commissioner Forre, I'd, I'd probably like to review it again in, in, in 90 days, in three months, and have a report back. And I'd like to have a report back, not just from the sheriff, but also have some measurables as it's Mr. Crockett stated in the contract, have some direct measurables and, and then come back and revisit it. But I, we've got a lot to, got a lot of really good, because of the two of you, a lot of really good momentum moving forward as it relates to mental health in the jail out there and the things that we're progressing and trying to be proactive with. And I think that'd be great to get that messaging out there. So that's kind of where I'm leaving, just leaning as it relates to discussion right now.
Thank you for that. Ralph, do you have a comment?
Yes, I have a comment in favor of this because one of the things with inside of the incidents that's happened locally here lately and everything too, in the minority community, there's been discussion about just this. And I've lost a valuable part of our program, which was Anna, and she's been hired by the sheriff program, and it's working to, to bridge that transparency gap even more. I just want to speak in favor for this in that there's been, over at the city council and time, week after week, we've asked them to be more diligent about being, having more transparency and helping the sheriff to be able to go ahead and get out there the message of the great work that officers are doing, the great work that, that is happening with inside the sheriff's department itself, the jails, and the different things with the mental health and the things that are going on. We, I'd like to encourage you to vote yes on this because it is a valuable part of being able to show that the government, you guys and the city, and that's interested in having transparency and letting us, the public, to know what is going on. And this, this is a good, good thing right here because it's one of the things I came today for, is to see that you guys have passed this and, and let us be able to have an insight into what's going on with the sheriff's department and the sheriff should be able to communicate with us. Now, I'm blessed because I'm a busybody and I show up to all the meetings. So I know the sheriff and I can hear all the things, but there are people out there that are in the community that want to know about certain situation or upset about certain shootings or certain things that are going on, and they try to tell the other side of what's going on and what have, the time limit of what the window that has to be done and this, and will have a better understanding if they had that information. But this right here would provide a way for the sheriff's department to be able to have that and be able to communicate with them. I'm asking you to be able to be, help these guys by helping and passing this so that they can speak with the public, that the public can have more of an awareness of what's going on, of, of the good things that are going on outside the government, sheriffs are doing, and the rug, and steps that are being taken by you, the commission and everything to oversee and make sure that mental health care and all this is being done. It's only, you have to be out there like me, but most people aren't like me, and this is not going to be out there. But if you provide a window for them, and this, we can get that done. So that's what I'd just like to say, that I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, Ralph. So Commissioners, I, I'm in favor of this for a couple of reasons. Number one, sheriff, if you look at the sheriff's budget and where our taxpayers for Weber County goes, the majority, by a good measure, goes to the sheriff's department and of our budget, the taxpayer dollars. And yet, when you talk to the public in general, they probably have a less understanding of what takes place in the sheriff's department and questioning what takes place in the sheriff's department over everything else we do, because we've been very proactive in getting that message out. So again, I view this as communication with the public for two reasons. Number one, public safety there, and right now, we know there's an environment across this country of a distrust of public safety. We've seen that with the shootings. And I think anything we can do as a local community to ensure that the public has a trust in our public safety officers makes sense. I think that gives us the ability to get children, high school people involved that have a distrust of public safety from day one, as they see this communication that they haven't seen before in this county, the ability to say, look, these people that are representing, that are driving around in these trucks and cars represent us, they're here to help, not hurt. So I'm, I'm a believer that with the controls we have in place with the contract, I've read the contract, we have the ability to monitor it. I agree with Commissioner Harvey's assessment. I, maybe even 60 days review would be good. But in my opinion, we should move forward, forward with this, at least in the stages that we can test to see if we are getting the results that, that we expect from it. So with that, I'm through giving my speech. Look for a motion or a comment.
I know that look. I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with the caveat, we review in 60 days, as you mentioned, Commissioner Forre, and we have the metrics, measurement that were described by you, by Mr. Crockett, in that presentation.
And you would also have a couple of months' worth of invoices that itemize the services that are being provided, and you have the ability to do this with not only this contract, but the existing contract with the county.
So that being said, I'd like in that formal presentation or in a work session or this commission meeting, not later than the 1st of May of this year.
Okay, we have that motion. We have the motion as amended with those contingencies, which I fully support. We have a second. All right, I'm going to go ahead and second that motion, seeing that Commissioner Jenkins wants to bow out. All right.
Well, I don't know that he will. I mean, you will watch, he's just, he's very, you know, one of the things I appreciate, sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
One of the things I appreciate about both of you, you're both very careful and your business experience through the past has taught you a lot, and it'd be foolish for us to overlook that. So there may be some things that I'm missing here, but I trust you both, and I also trust the sheriff here and let, and I trust the DTO group with their messaging, and so I'm willing to give it a shot.
Okay, we have a willing to give it a shot vote, so appreciate that. All right, any discussion? Commissioner Jenkins, your last opportunity.
Yeah, well, the only pushback I'd give here, we met with sheriff yesterday and he didn't say a word about this, and so it hits us a little blind. Nobody's here from the sheriff's office to present it today. I can't push back against the sheriff, and it's hard given oversight when you, you don't see this. And these are big dollars, 120,000, that's $10,000 a month. That's a big contract. That's not a little contract. That's not a 40, $50,000, let's do this or do that. So until I hear from the sheriff, I'm, I'm going to vote against it now. There'll be no hard feelings because I understand you two, and it's Gage, it's your portfolio, and I do understand your desire to support him.
Thank you for those comments.
You bet.
And, you know, I can tell you this, we will trust, but we're going to verify this in the next 60 days, and, and we'll look at those invoices as well.
You bet.
Absolutely. And, and this contract gives us that ability. If this was a straight-out 120 with no verification, no metric, I'd be in the same camp that you are.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So with that, Commissioner Harvey, any closing remarks on your motion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. It's been approved. Item Six, request for ratification of Transportation Alternative Program, TAP, cooperative agreement with the Utah Department of Transportation, UDOT, for the Pineview Loop Pathway, 7450 East to Old Snow Basin Road. Mr. Wilkinson, can you explain what this is?
Yes, Commissioners, last year, Weber Pathways was awarded $200,000 from UDOT for a TAP grant. The county matched $100,000 toward that, so there's $300,000 total in funding, and the county had to provide that match in order for the funding to be awarded. That took place in June of last year. We finally actually received the TAP agreement, the actual document from UDOT. It has already been signed. It was signed by Commissioner Harvey a few weeks ago, so we're asking for ratification of that agreement. Everything has already been done and taken care of. We just need formal approval for that ratification.
Questions, Commissioners?
This is so exciting. This is so exciting to see this progress for that up there. It's gonna, it's just wonderful.
Agreed.
Okay. Mr. Jenkins?
Well, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd make a motion to approve Item G6, the TAP grant from the Utah Department of Transportation.
Second. And we have a second by Commissioner Harvey. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Let's move now. I think Chris Crockett is going to take this one. Number Seven, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Dr. Robert S. Groh for an EMT physician advisor as required by Utah Administrative Code R426-3-700. Mr. Crockett?
Thank you. The county currently has three interlocal agreements with Ogden City Fire Department, Roy City Fire, and Weber Fire District to provide paramedic services throughout the county. State statute requires that there be a physician advisor for every emergency medical service program that is out there. The county currently has an agreement with Dr. Groh. This, they need to, it is time to renew the agreement, and it would be an increase in compensation from 45,000 to 55,000. I'm happy to go over the, he's got, there's a, there is a giant list of requirements that Dr. Groh would be required to perform, including helping out with medical education requirements, advising the different districts regarding recommendations to resolve any issues that may arise with patient care, developing protocols. Any, if you want me to expound on that, I'd be happy to. But primarily, this is just a renewal and increasing the compensation to 55,000.
And if I'm not wrong, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that this 55,000 in comparison to comparable counties and what they're paying for and comparable services is a very good deal for Weber County.
I haven't seen the numbers, so I don't know what that comparison would be.
All right.
But to, I, I have read Dr. Groh's qualifications, and they are really quite extensive.
I forget who briefed me, but when I had the briefing, it appeared that we were well under what we probably pay somebody else with the same credentials. So Commissioners, questions?
The Commissioner, question I have, Commissioner Forre, is who negotiated this contract and who sent it to us to be ratified? Because nobody talked to me about it, and you sign up here and here it is on the agenda, and you presented it, and I appreciate it, but we don't know really what happened in this negotiation.
These contracts used to be housed with human resources, and so now we're, they're, we're looking for a new home to house those, and it looks like, if I'm not mistaken, that it'll be under the clerk auditor's office in the purchasing department. So our office received a request to draft a renewal to increase the compensation and to update the agreement. That came through Jason, Jason Horn, and I believe he'd been in communication with Chair Forre. And so the negotiations that went back, back and forth between Dr. Groh and the county, that happened a lot through our office. I communicated with him, I have, with the assistance of Brian Barron as well. We looked at the admin code R426-3-700, updated those requirements and put them into the agreement.
So when you negotiate that contract, did you feel that the ask was appropriate?
I actually didn't participate in the financial amount. I just, I just drafted the legal provisions. So I received the amount of, who's communicated to me through Jason Horn.
I can add a little bit of detail, please. That's okay, Mr. Chair. Yes, I, my understanding is that Jason, they spent quite a bit of time going back and forth, and it wasn't just purchasing and the doctor, it was the fire, fire chiefs and those that, that worked, that work with, with the services. My understanding as well was that the increase, he, that, there hasn't been an increase to this contract amount for about 10 years, so he's been being paid the same amount for, for quite a bit of time. But there was quite a bit of, my understanding is there is quite a bit of negotiation.
I believe, I believe that's who briefed me, was Jason Horn, and he also indicated that the contract had been at the same level for, I think it was 10 years. So, anyway, question, additional questions?
Commissioners, I, in my research with the agenda today, I did follow up with some of our public safety folks based on what Dr. Groh has done for the paramedic, with the regards to the paramedic fund, and it came with a resounding compliment and recommendation that we continue this.
And I would also add that in these negotiations, whenever I, when I completed the draft of the, the legal terms, I also did send that to the three districts for their review and approval as well.
Okay, back to the Commission for comments or action.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve contract by and between Weber County and Dr. Groh for the EMT physician advisor as required by Code R426-3-700.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Harvey.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Item H, Commissioner comments. Commissioners?
I'll go one last thing here.
Go ahead.
Mr. Van Der Nak, you've been sitting out in that audience now for nearly three years.
That long?
Nearly three years. What a, you saw us the way we deliberated today, live. You can view it later, again, on your favorite video review channel. But we'll leave this meeting today and we'll have the, we'll be able to communicate again. We'll have great respect for one another. I work in a really, really great place with great people. It's a wonderful time for Weber County, none like I've experienced in my 26 years. And I appreciate not just these two, but all the others that are hanging on that wall over there and the Sean Wilkinson's and the Sarah Swans and the Marty Smiths and everyone else that works for them. We have a wonderful team. If only every community were this effective. That's just my opinion, and I choose to keep that right here local. I don't need to go out to the state or national. Boy, but it's working really, really good here, and I'm grateful for our founding fathers for setting up something, I think divinely created. And those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Very appropriate. Commissioner Jenkins, anything?
No, I don't have anything. No, I don't have anything.
Thank you for that. Tim, yeah, we appreciate you being here, take the time to give the public an idea of what we do, I think is very important, and, and I think that I can say that the standard examiner, you've done a great job of being fair. You tell the story as it's, should be told, so the public can make then the determination. You don't, in the past, there's certain papers that look to write stories to basically slant public opinion one way or the other. I don't think that you do that at all, and I think that's great for the public. I think it's good for us. We, we live and die up here as Commissioners on, on our decisions. But those decisions have to be aired in the public, and they'll, the public will be the ones that will make the final determination whether we are doing this job the way they'd like to see it done. And, but with proper information, they'll make that decision. And I fully trust the public that they will make good decisions as we move forward. So thank you very much.
He's good at his craft. You're good at your craft, Tim.
He's good.
Really good.
So we appreciate you.
You know, there is one thing I'd like to say.
Go ahead.
Tim, the article, the article you wrote on our waist was a wonderful article, and you, you filled the paper with four or five nice pictures, and you did a good job on that. I, I thought it was very fair and very informative, and you did, we're getting lots of calls on it, and you did a great job there. I just want you to know that.
Anything else, Commissioners?
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Chair votes aye, we're adjourned, thank you very much.